Um, since we don't have anything on the agenda for you, uh, Mr. Wallace, would you like to, under correspondence, tell us about the nursing home meeting?
You can, you want to do the minutes first? I don't care whenever you want. I was going to do it whenever.
I just figured the rest of the day's kind of cool after Dawn.
Let's do the minutes real quick and then we'll be able to figure them out.
I take it there's no official request for recount, right?
They concluded.
That's what I thought. You just have a typo in KSA, executive session? Did you find it? Just go down about five lines, one, two, three, four, five. Yep. There's a double period in there, double. Under, oh, I'm sorry. Um, the first one, right? Now, on the second page, it's two-thirds of the way down, "After adjourned canvassers, and reconvene in a meeting." Your executive session that you requested. The first time in, it's a typo. It's the same typo in the next one, too.
Yeah.
And then you have, under budget publications, the board approved publishing the 2019 notice of budget hearing, seconded by me, but that's not really a motion?
I know.
Okay. So just the board approved publishing? That's all I can see.
I've entertained a motion.
We have to approve the minutes as corrected.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Taking no further discussion, all of us prepare to say a motion.
Right.
Okay, Mr. Wallace.
I did meet with Lincoln Park Manor Incorporated nonprofit, Madonna. Reiner was there, a county health nurse. Steve Granzo was there. Bob Krangle was there. We discussed the situation. Talked about the things that we talked about at the commission meeting, and then we talked about having Bob, I believe it's Siebel, come, and John, Jim Gableman. Did send him a letter, and after visiting with Kelly, he is going to come the 10th and 11th of September. The meeting Kelly and I visited, along with Doug. And it appears that we probably need to formally appoint a committee to develop a plan to move forward. I think the, our feeling was that the committee probably needs to consist of people that have a an interest that can do something, I guess. So Kelly, we kind of decided that we probably should have a commissioner. We're going to need our county attorney for legal advice. We need Doug Alvin, who does it. We need the economic development, Kelly Larson. And I think, since we've discussed about trying to utilize the hospital as much as we can, we need Steve Granzo there, and of course, Bob Siebel would be our advisor or would give us recommendations. I think that's six-member committee. I think that's big enough. I guess you would notice that Lincoln Park Manor doesn't have anybody on the board. One of the deals with Lincoln Park Manor is that they don't have any money. They don't have any, their-
Lincoln Manor Incorporated.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Lincoln Manor Incorporated doesn't have any money, and we discussed what their role would be, since we had discussed the fact that we thought it needed to be an appointed, board-appointed committee, something like the hospital, how it was created. But we need Lincoln Park Incorporated as a 501(c)(3) so they can receive money in donations and grants. So I think they're going to be an important part of it. They're just not going to be the governing board of the, would not be the governing board probably of the nursing home if Lincoln County takes it. The other complication here is that we do have a three-year lease with Grace Team, and certainly they're going to have to be drawn into this discussion. Kelly then, Kelly went ahead, then I had Kelly go ahead and set out a plan for Bob when he comes, so we don't waste any time. Her recommendation was that in the morning of September 10th, that he tour the Lincoln Park Manor. Bob also felt it was important that he visit with the administrator and the staff to make sure he has a good feel of the place and the operation. Then she has kind of a two-hour scheduled, a meeting with, if we would appoint this committee to analyze the financials with him. And she also set up, wants to set up a time then later for him to meet with Grace Team to go over that. And then, at the end of the day, we would meet with hospital auditors possibly, if they can come, the nonprofit. We want to include Ladon in this meeting, Health Department. So everyone is on the same page. Then on September the 11th, the next day, we'd take all that information from September the 10th, sit down with the committee, working committee again, kind of develop a plan. And in the after, or later, that morning, we would meet with the commission. Kelly recommended it be an executive session. It probably will have to, because we'll be discussing financials. And then, at the end of that executive session, we'd have a wrap-up with the nonprofit hospital board and probably the Lincoln County Health Nurse as well. I've looked over this recommendation of Kelly's. I think it's probably workable. I also think we're, she's right, that we need to develop a formal committee to bring a plan back to this commission. We just can't be focusing out.
Who is Robert Siebel?
That's the man that's coming to look over.
But I mean, what is he, where's he from? What's he doing?
He's from, that Wisconsin, the guy that had the brother that knows all the stuff.
Bob, okay, okay. I didn't recognize his name.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. He's the one that we've contacted to kind of do an independent study.
And is he being paid?
That, I think we do need to. His, this first meeting is, supposedly he said he would do it for free, but I, I think we do need to provide some travel expenses at the very minimum point. And then if he would continue, if we wanted him to continue, yes, we would have to start paying him, but as a consultant. But he was very willing to come, free of charge, to kind of get the groundwork going and see what's going on, and I don't know that we can pass up an opportunity to somebody of that expertise to come, but I do feel that we will need to re-enumerate him something. I don't think that should be a problem.
Yeah, I think we'd reverse travel expenses is a problem.
And I understand he's flying in. I think he's flying in from Denver. I don't know whether he lives in Denver now or not, but he was going to be in Denver. And I think he's going to take the plane from Denver to Salina, that connection, which is, flies out, I don't, two or three times a day.
And you said Kelly put together a recommendation. Do you have that?
I have it right here, yes. I wrote it out. Some ideas that she had, yes. Kelly has been very, very helpful in this, and has done a lot lately. And she is in communication with Grace Team. She's in communication with Lincoln, hi. Lincoln Park Manor. Yeah, I'm talking about you. She's been in contact with Lincoln Incorporated, Lincoln Manor Incorporated, and of course, she's been in contact with the commission, too. She's been touching base with all players, which is pretty helpful.
So, if you've been in contact with Grace Team, I mean, are they still demanding payment at this point?
I think they want to talk. They want to-
I mean, the last they brought to us was a proposal where we buy them out for their expenses that are upwards of quarter million, closer to half a million dollars, so.
I think they-
Are you in contact with John or his son?
Um, I've talked to both more recently, Ryan, the son. I think they just, the impression that I get, they really want to sit down and talk and negotiate. I don't know what their ultimate plan would be for the price. I think there's room for negotiation, whether it's going to be something that people like, what they say, I don't know. I don't know. I just kind of sense they want to talk, they want to communicate. I think they have a plan that they would like to talk about more, and so I just feel like it's important, because they are the operators. I think we just have to keep communications open with them, and talk to them, and they'll be happy about it.
I also think that where we have one central group working, it'll be much easier to get information, instead of having it all several different, talking to several different groups, that they're talking to one group, and basically, they have someone that can make some decisions. Lincoln Park Incorporated can't make any decisions on it, you know, because they don't really have a, their interest is in keeping the nursing home up.
Is the hospital board itself a nonprofit?
They have a hospital foundation that's a nonprofit part that the gifts go to, and then they funnel it back to the hospital.
Who is the board of the foundation? Is that separate than the hospital?
Yes, yes, it is, yes.
I think there's one, maybe one or two board members involved.
That are, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So the part that's missing now is getting contacts for licensure. That should be our primary concern because of the time, the time restriction, I'll call it. I don't know, did Dawn give you a copy of everything that I wrote down from our last meeting? I don't know if you got a copy of that or not, but basically, we need to be contacting temp agencies, schools that graduate people who have licensure ability, because regardless of what we do, and everyone in communication and all that sounds hunky-dory, but without someone with an operating license, we cannot move forward. So we really need to make those contacts, I would say, before this meeting.
As to the availability of one, because we, there's no decision, or there won't be any decision until after those meetings, as to how we're going to proceed.
Well, the concept is, if you have a board that's going to oversee it, they're going to hire an administrator, just as the board for the hospital hires an administrator. So without that person, without having applicants for that position, there's, the board doesn't have a job.
I guess my feeling is, I don't think we're that close.
But what I'm saying is, you may be looking at months of searching and/or qualifying or contracting to someone.
I think you've got to remember that. We have that lease for three years.
The lease is in breach right now.
It is, but, but it is still active, because no one has said that we're going to want to have.
Right.
So, so I mean, that part, that part is there. I agree with you that we've got to figure out this license. That's one of the discussion items we had at the meeting, is, but really, nobody knows, and I think hopefully Bob will have some insight into how we can, what we need for licenses, how we're going to get those licenses.
Well, he doesn't work in Kansas, though. I mean, each state-
I realize, I realize that, but he, he has an overall view of what licenses are probably going to be needed.
But we need to be contacting people who are licensed, or who are about to get their licenses, because the schooling process in and of itself is pretty much the equivalent of an associate's degree, and there are people out there graduating with that now, every semester. So you may be looking at someone who's potentially coming into the field for the first time, and you can contract them on a short-term basis to at least get your license established for the facility under the new county appointed board management. Do you see what I'm saying? You can't just continue to operate under the previous owner's license, is basically what I'm saying.
But I think that, I really think we need to wait until after this meeting, before we can hunt around a little to see, you know, maybe watch schools do that, how many are graduating and stuff. But as far as contacting people to administrate, I think we need to wait until after this to even see where we're at. We may be several months away from that.
Well, the continued threats of closing the door there don't really make me feel comfortable with this whole wait attitude. I mean, we've all received various emails at different times about closing the doors, and that is just, it's a tactic. It's nothing more than a tactic. So I don't think we need to respond in accordance with wishes from someone who's threatening to close the facility. I think we need to go ahead with our own plans regardless. I mean, it's nice to have them in as part of the discussion, because they're our leasing, but they're in breach of the lease, and we have not moved forward to pursue retaining any of our purchased items there, you know? We really don't even have the full inventory list complete. There are so many things that we haven't done our due diligence to make sure we know what we own, what the value is, collecting even the rent money. You know, the discussion part, we can all talk nice, like this is a nice discussion, but ultimately, it comes down to us making some hard decisions. And that doesn't happen behind closed doors with all the leaders who have monetary investment that want their take. Everybody knows that. That's my secret.
I guess I feel like that's what we're trying to do, is we're trying to come up with our plan.
My concern is, if your plan is to include the wishes of those who owe us money, that's a concern.
No, I'm not saying that we need to meet with them so to hear their wishes and so that we can make those wishes come true. That's not at all where I'm coming from.
Okay.
Where I'm coming from is, they are the operator right now. Is there any, anything there where we can kind of work together or not? If there isn't, then what I see this working committee is coming out of that meeting and saying, okay, it's over, we're done.
I guess I'm just a little-
So here's the plan. Let's come up with our feasibility study. Let's come up with the plan. How are we going to get this nonprofit board operating? What's going to be the hiring process? What's going to be the licensing process? So that we can, we do, I guess I feel like this is our opportunity to take control of the situation and say, this is, this is what we are going to do to move forward. And having a conversation with Grace, we can kind of figure out whether there's any opportunity with them or not.
To do what, is my question?
To move forward.
Move forward what?
With a plan.
With Grace Team.
With our, with our plan, with Lincoln County's desires for the hopes and futures of this, of Lincoln Park.
And what are you envisioning as Grace Team's portion of their, of them being incorporated in that, is my question?
All I'm thinking, right now, we're just having a conversation with them. It's just sit down and talk with them.
Okay, and my, this is my confusion. This is my confusion. From the spring until now, all we've heard is that they want us to buy them out, okay? And then we had a consultant come in, who you brought in to the table.
Yes, and he's still working with us.
And we all sat around this table, and it was his opinion that that business is worth this, okay? So we came to that conclusion already. And I'm just kind of hearing that now we're going back to the drawing board. I thought the whole reason we brought in this consultant to establish the fact that his professional opinion is that that business is worth nothing, means that we need to move forward with our own plans. And when you say you want to incorporate the people who are asking us for money with that plan, I don't see, I don't see what they're-
There has to be a transition there.
Yeah.
They have to be involved in the transition.
I guess that's what I'm trying to get at, is how, how are we going to do this at some point? I mean, we're still kind of, we're still working together, whether we like it or not right now, and so what is this transition going to be? Is there any hope that the Grace Team's going to work with us on that transition, or is there not?
And what, and what do you mean by that? Work with us, like, give us a better deal? I mean, if we establish that the value is zero, what do you mean? If they want $600,000 and we establish this for zero, are you talking about a negotiation in price?
I'm talking about the licensing, you know? How do we get from where we are right now to where this nonprofit board, where we've got a licensing now?
Well, that's what I just, that's what I just addressed. We have not, we have not done any research or sought out any person who is licensed. That needs to be what we do, not asking them for their license, but seeking an actual license that would belong to us because we have hired it. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, and I, I think that is important, but I don't think that's our step one right now, because who's going to hire this person? I mean, we still have to kind of figure out the organizational structure. And there's so many things that, to me, kind of have to come into play. We have to figure out before we hire the person. So that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is how do we get from where we are right now?
Are you familiar with Postrock of New Meetings? Okay, that's a nonprofit that was formed in less than a month. So here's my concern. You have the ability to do the paperwork, not you personally, just in general, to form a nonprofit in less than a month, that can receive donations, that can operate fully as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. No matter how many people are on that board, no matter whether the commission appoints it or not, a 501(c)(3) can be established within a month, give or take, okay? It's not going to be a month-long process to find someone, contract someone, ask them to come here and be supervisory personnel with an acting license in 30 days. That's a 60 to 90-day process at least. So for you to tell me that that's a, I see that as being backward. You're talking a month, you're talking three months. You need to start the three-month process before the month-long process, is what I'm getting at. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but I think before you ever get to the point of hiring somebody, we're not, we're not to that point. That's my opinion.
But I'm saying, who are you going to hire? Where are you going to find them? Where's your pool of people? Like, that, that's part of that three-month process. The paperwork to file with the IRS is not a three-month process.
But there's a lot more that has to be done than just paperwork with an IRS.
Why?
I think we've got to figure out feasibility, the financial viability, what is the, you know, what's the money going to be?
We've already done that, though. That's why we had that executive session. We saw what the income was. We saw what the generated revenue was. We saw what the take off the top was. We know what those numbers are.
So the commission knows what it's going to take to get Lincoln Park Manor up and running under this nonprofit board?
No, you said the feasibility study. That's, we did our own financial assessment of-
Of Grace Team.
No, that, we saw from the transition from the prior owner through Grace Team, and we did it in executive session, so we saw the numbers. We know what the take off the top was. We know what the budget issues were. We know how much we were subsidizing. All those numbers were revealed to us, and we were also advised by the person that you brought in that the value is zero at this point with the debt. So we have those numbers, is what I'm saying. I'm just, I'm wondering, if Grace Team is coming to the table, what is the negotiation? A dollar amount? Because that is just not a smart business idea.
No, that's, that's not my intent. My intent is, they're the operator right now. We've got to figure out what the transition is going to be.
Well, I think that's why we had the executive session with the attorney, to talk about the lease and the breaching of the lease, and what that means.
Well, I think, first thing we need to do is get the board established.
So how are we going to solicit for board members?
I think you got a list or-
Hang on, a committee.
But that's the committee. I'm talking about the board.
Yeah, I think we need to establish the committee first.
Number one, we need to know the legal parameters that this commission takes to establish that board, and that's where we need the county attorney. Hospital is established by statute of the state of Kansas. I'm not sure there is a statute. I'm not aware of a statute that a county can establish a board for a nursing home facility. So one of the things is, that's one of the areas that we need that county attorney, and this committee needs to, needs some advice to, and needs to bring back that recommendation to the commission. We have assumed that we can do it like, something like the hospital, but nobody has researched state law to see if that's true or not, so I think that's one of the things that this committee's going to be working on. And I agree with Kelly. We have got to have a communication between Grace Team, number one. We want them continuing to operate that home until we're ready, some way, you know? And we've got to figure out how to, how to keep that place operating while we're developing a plan. So I guess I think we need to appoint the committee and move forward from there, and I think the licenses, I realize there's problems with it, but certainly there has been startups started that licenses are gotten as they go along. Some of those, you have to run for a while before they'll ever issue the license, I understand. They've got to see you in, in motion, so.
No, you can't operate it without a license period. That's the concern. There, there is no transition time where they're going to say, oh, yes, go ahead and operate it without a license. That is my primary concern. You can go through a temp agency to try to find someone who's willing to take a short-term contract so that you are licensed under that particular operator, because the building has a license, but the operator has a license as well. So the building license, I believe we can apply for based on ownership of the building and facility. The operating license for the administrator that we were talking about, when you asked John what's it worth and he didn't give us a number, Terry, do you remember that? That is the concern. You can't just go without that for any period of time. So that's, that's why I'm saying that should be at the top of the priority list.
We need to, we need to put it all in here, or get it all in. Were you okay with the names on the committee?
I, did we have a named list, or I didn't?
I'll go, go, Wes, the people he thought I'd be on there.
The only one that I don't have named is the commissioner, county attorney, Doug Alvin, Kelly Larson, Steve Granzo, and Bob Siebel that's coming. We need a commissioner.
Okay, I wrote down Crangle. Is that just because he was at the other meeting?
He was at the other meeting, yes. I was just giving those names that were at the other meeting. The board was there.
So Jennifer...
Jennifer was not at the meeting.
Jennifer, Ladonna, Steve, Bob, this Bob, and who else did you show?
No, 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 Ladonna. I have the commissioner, one commissioner. I have Jennifer, the county attorney. I have Kelly Larson, economic development, and I have Steve Granzo, the Lincoln County hospital administrator. And I have Doug Alvin, who has worked with us for, from the Dean Hansen...
Alvin.
Foundation. And then, of course, Bob's gonna be the guy that we're talking to.
Bob Siebel.
So there's basically five of us and Bob.
Was Ladonna on that?
Yes.
No.
Oh. One, two, three, four. Alvin, O'Hare, Commissioner, Granzo. Who's your fifth? I have Ladonna written down.
I have a commissioner. I have Jennifer. I have Kelly.
Oh, Kelly.
I have Steve. I have Doug. And I have Bob, who's coming.
I would think, Mr. Wallace, you've been working on this deal. I would be in favor of you continuing if you're interested in doing it. On the committee.
I would, I would do it.
I would move to appoint those people to a committee to start the process of forming the nonprofit board.
I think we just need to move, develop a plan, or present a plan to the commission, how to move forward with the operation of Lincoln Park Manor. Which I guess is actually the Lincoln County nursing home.
Without any monetary negotiating power, correct?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. The commission, I, one commissioner cannot do monetary.
But I'm saying, if that, if that discussion is beginning to happen with this committee, that's inappropriate, in my opinion, because we can't make promises financially with these...
There would be no, there would be no promises. It would just be a plan being presented to this commission to tell us whether they want to move forward in that direction or whether we need to look at some other position. This committee is only presenting a proposal. It's very similar to what Lincoln Park Incorporated did, that the commissioners said, no, it's too expensive, we aren't gonna do it. And so now we're looking at developing another plan.
May I, maybe add a person?
Have you got Dawn?
I think maybe Dawn, because, to be honest, to keep all that paperwork straight, and Dawn, you can say no. I know that it's another task for you, but I feel like there might be a disconnect with paperwork. I mean, everyone's kind of got their own, you know, Jennifer has legal paperwork to do, Doug Alvin has already done a lot of financial, you know, stuff. I don't know, unless, unless Aljo wants to keep notes, I don't know how to have essentially... I mean, all that paperwork's gonna come to you anyway, is what I'm thinking. Are you willing, or does that not interest you at all? I'm also thinking, since you have probably the most historical knowledge of all of the transitions between owners, that might be some kind of help.
I don't...
And I'm still concerned about the inventory list, to be honest.
I don't have a problem with it, if you wanna take it on, and that's entirely up to you. I know you're over the limit.
Yeah, please say no if you don't want to, but that's just... Okay.
Well, if you could at least sit in, maybe, it looks like something you don't need to be there, you know.
It's fine, I...
Okay. I have a motion on the floor to have a second. I'll include Dawn.
Yes, I can.
Is there any further discussion? Not all of them prepared to say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, Dawn, you're on the agenda.
Um, I have applications for human resource office services, which we guess to review a technically equalistic decision. If you want to, I...
I would, I would say the confidentiality of the people who are applying, I think if it's in an open session, their employer may not be happy to see their applying for a job, so...
There's eight applications here, next apartment is at Cora Hill, so if you wanna go in for 10 minutes and then...
We could at least listen to them.
Yeah, I'd be cool.
Mm-hmm, okay, sort them.
I would move and go into executive session to view applicants for human resource.
I would second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all of them prepared to say aye.
Uh, oh, 10 minutes, well, whatever you said, Dawn.
No, let's just use a second.
No, here we go, actually.
We're ready for you guys, if you wanna come on.
I don't have much, you want me to go first, is that right?
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I just have some thank you notes from our board. So I'm just gonna bring these over. Yeah, and, so we really appreciate it, from USD 299.
Well, thank you, Jude. I'm glad to see you today.
Yep.
Bring the Westworth more money?
Yep, no, no.
Sometimes I'm glad, sometimes I'm glad to see people show up.
Yeah, we're just really appreciative.
Yeah, well, I, I think, I think we need to invest in our young people in this county, there's no doubt about it. I'm glad, glad we could help.
And we're just quick, we probably won't, we were trying to get the boilers done for this winter, we probably won't technically work it, and then we'll give you an update as soon as we get things or who are hiring, those type of things.
Thanks.
If you have any questions, anytime, you can holler.
Okay.
Go ahead and ask them.
I'm not asking for money.
Oh, okay.
Don't worry. I wanted to give you the proposal that we've already received. So this is for the high school project. It is, it just goes through, we're at the point that we're getting bids. So we had our pre-bid meeting, and that was on August 1st, and they did the walkthrough. And we've been delayed a little bit. As you remember, we hired Fred Malakode out of Missouri. So they, his structural engineer, the units that we want to put into, or any type of unit that needs to go up on the gym and the metal and wood shop are heavier than the units that are there now. So the structural engineer did not get back to Fred, so it's been delayed a little bit. They're gonna have to look at infrastructure and see if there's anything that needs to be done. But in the meantime, this is, this is the bid. I wanted to give that to you, just if you had any questions. And so I don't have a date. He has not gotten back to me on a date. I think he's working with the structural engineer. He didn't give us the poundage of what the difference is between the units. So at this point in time, we are just waiting to hear back from him. We, like Jude, would really, really like to get the project over LES started sooner than what it's looking. Just for the fact of, if we do it, if we do it, we could declare two classrooms at a time during the school year and the expense versus doing it in the summer. So that's, that's, you know, we're going to be talking about that at the September 4th, but you know, like, you know, when the decision is. Because we don't want to have huge overheads because we're doing it in piece by piece by piece. That is not a good taxpayer money type position we want to be in, so...
Is this engineer also putting together the proposal for the LRS school he's doing?
Correct, he's doing it all. And EPM is our, and EPM was also there because they are the company that regulates our temperature. So if you're in a room, they set that, we set the temperature, let's say 75, it cannot be changed. So, and the heat is also regulated, and that helps control our costs, our electrical and gas costs. So they're also involved in this process, so... But we just appreciate, I'll keep you updated, so if you have any questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yep.
We received eight applications for the HR position that we were advertising. We decided that we're not gonna do anything until next meeting, and then we'll decide who the eight to interview. So we just took the paperwork.
Too much information to try to analyze in 10 minutes. We used to have, we used to have a list that were sort of standard for most of the applicants we needed, not specific to H R.
Do we wanna do a late afternoon, like, or after working hours, maybe, so that they have a chance to... I'm thinking, some of those people are coming from far away. Maybe we don't wanna do it in the middle of their workday, since we can be flexible.
About six o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, and then be prepared for work, too.
Yeah, you guys have, you know, some things. And then, I'm assuming you guys definitely want to interview, and maybe one of others present. I sometimes feel like too many people is very intimidating. I will hold this much as a hope to this level of...
I would say...
Three people on the board is pretty adequate, I mean... How soon do you, how soon, like, are we talking?
Well, I think, once we develop our list, I think we need to proceed with it as quickly as possible.
So what do we, what will be offered as a hiring date, like, first of...
Um, whoever you would hire, if they have a current job, what does it give a work job to?
Yes.
I'm thinking October 1st, in my head. By the time we deal with paperwork and the free...
Yeah, some, you know, it's gonna depend, some of them probably be available sooner than others.
You just, you want them to be good to their current employer, you want them to... So that's kind of how I would say it. I did look at it from the courthouse long since we had some time to discuss, since we had the majority of people here. So I just put a time so that Philly and then extension would know what time to come.
Okay.
But I went, when I talked to everybody, I just kind of told them, especially extension, because I thought somebody had already talked to Elisa, but apparently they had to bring their ideas, because just because I threw out something doesn't mean that's a good idea. So Alexis had asked a couple weeks ago when we talked about this size-wise programs. The Appraisers Office pulled off, pulled off, I thought they made three copies, but we must have...
It's each floor.
The old plans, and then they printed off this, so we, they added the sizes to this. That is, I think, very original, when the courthouse was first built, and they took the sizes off of that to put onto this. So you can kind of see room-wise what there is. I will say that discussion kind of was discussed about the building outdoors, and whether or not it could be refurbished. That's a potential, yeah. Which, on, on part of it, we have, you know, a lifetime of salt, probably five years' worth of salt, but you could find a place for it. And I have the old election equipment. I didn't get rid of all the voting booths because they need them, so I didn't, I downsized, but we kept some. And so that's basically what's out on one side. Tammy has some books that she said she could find someplace for. The other side is the sheriff's department, they have files and storage. I thought the county attorney's office had as well. But it didn't look like it when I went in and peeked, and then they have evidence, I should say evidence, I don't know if it's evidence or, or just stuff that has been found, but they haven't been able to find it over or for in there. So the idea, or the thought was, is if that building was completely empty, would it cost an incredible amount of money just to knock down the current walls and put up drywall and make it decent? I do know that there is no propane, because we haven't cut the propane when they did the back steps and lower the driveway out back.
Natural business.
Or natural gas, sorry, yes, natural gas. There's no gas to the building. So we'd have to do probably electric furnace and hot water heater, but...
For what?
One of the proposals was county attorney's office, the other discussion was extension. I'm not sure if the building is big enough. I don't, it doesn't look very big from the outside, but once you get inside, it looks kinda big?
Well, they get the walls and everything out, but it's gonna be better than the...
Does extension pay utilities here? So like, when we approved budgets, every department had a, well, most departments had a portion of their budget assigned to utilities, correct?
No, just telephone.
Oh, phone, okay.
Yeah, the county general takes care of everything, utilities, internet. The only thing it doesn't take care of is actual phone lines.
And extension doesn't pay rent?
Yeah.
And we, and what I was understanding from the letter that we received from, who sent us the letter?
Yeah.
Yes, it said that we house the district headquarters, is that what I'm getting?
Well, I don't know. I'm assuming that Elisa must be over the top of the town district.
She's the head of the, she's the head of the Postrock district, yes.
So no one else has that. We, like, Lincoln County is housing it.
We have the administrator.
Is that just something that, why is it that way?
I assume she worked here, and when they moved her up, she kept her office.
So when she got that position, she just stayed here, but that's her position?
And she, she travels, Ashley travels. The only one that doesn't travel is Marcy. And I don't understand that process very much. So, you know, for me to sit there and say what space they need and what they don't need. I was at a meeting and somebody told me that there is a state statute that says that the county must provide a office for extension, but I don't know if that truly exists. I was gonna research and I haven't had time. I'll look at 10 minutes, so...
And...
But I don't know what their needs are, because I don't know what they do.
Are they coming to the...
They're, they're gonna come to. Kelly's gonna come, and then I asked each of the offices to send a representative, so...
Is the kitchen still in that, is that still set up as a house? Living quarters?
Well, there's a sink there.
It was the sheriff's office.
Well, yeah, but it was, it was maintenance house. Maintenance man lived there.
Well, maybe years ago.
I'd say there's a sink on one side, because I think that's... I'd say there's a sink on one side, because I think that's what they probably set up for the health department that will maintain. And then I think there's a restroom on the other side, I tried to look to see that there's something standing in front of it, so I didn't want to move a lot of stuff. But it's definitely a thought, there's, it's got a brand new roof, and it's got guttering, so I don't know what it would take.
Back from the sheriff's, with the jail, it was the Sheriff's Office, three years dispatch and sheriff.
Then it was the Health Department for a while.
I think there's more room there than Westlake there is, if you go in there, they got all the insurance walls.
Do we have any dimensions on it, out of curiosity?
Um, I don't know.
I will run up and ask who's here, so we can figure.
Michael, will you go ahead and view all your area?
Hello.
Morning, Michael.
The rain for a stop, is it chip seal one for the day?
Hopefully not for the day, but it's got to slow down this morning. Be nice to have a little bit of sunshine on the pavement. We're getting stuff moved over, we finished up with Westfall Thursday afternoon, we're getting all the equipment moved over, so we'll do patching. Probably get that all patched up, and then it looks like we might have some warm weather next week. Hopefully we can just go down to Westfall and get that all sealed and try to catch some good weather for it anyways. And we'll finish doing the patching after that. With your guys' approval, I'd like to recommend using John Wollting as an interim supervisor. With a dollar, dollar fifteen an hour increase while he's acting.
And what will happen to his route in the meantime?
If he's got time, he'll go out and do some working on it, if not, we might have to have one of the other guys help out and do some shifting around.
I'm just wondering how that works, because the big push against having someone do this, which would be acting supervisor while having a route, was that it wasn't even possible, that's what I was told, so, so what is the plan there?
Plan is, we'll do what we can to get by. You know, it's not like he's going to be able to, and the majority of this is going to happen during the chip seal here, too. Which, there are several blade operators that are helping with that, and you know, their routes just, you're not able to get stuff done. As time allows, he will do what he can within that route.
It's a temporary deal, it's not a permanent problem.
Is his blade one of the ones that is being replaced when we get the new ones? Where are those two going, the new ones that are on their way?
One will be going to Sylvan. His blade is supposed to be up to be exchanged.
What do you mean, from the first round he purchases, or what do you mean, exchange?
Or changed out.
Okay.
But he likes that Komatsu, so we may do one of the other blades, the warranties are out on it, too, so. We haven't decided for sure.
We have four, we have four old ones left.
Correct.
One in Sylvan, and where were the other ones?
One in Vesper, one in Lincoln, and one in Barnard.
But his is the Barnard one?
Correct.
And he doesn't necessarily request that his be replaced at this time, so you're, you're talking between Vesper and Lincoln?
Correct. Those should be here next month, I'm hoping.
I am too.
We got the other Sylvan. Wondered about that the other day.
Well, I would move that we offer a dollar increase in wages. John to assume leadership role, road supervisor.
Second.
Any further discussion? Not all of it.
I, I do have a question. I mean, for his sake and our own payroll's sake, I mean, are we going to set some sort of timetable regardless of what we, what happens? I mean, I think.
Well, I think.
We could talk about.
I think, I think, if, if that is not, if that's only going to be temporary, as long as it's temporary, I think we're all right. But if we foresee that it's going to be other, we're going to have to do something.
Right.
We'll have to make some other decision.
Right.
And I guess, I'm looking at this as a temporary, until health, medical leave.
Right.
Guy comes back, so that's.
I guess I'd also recommend that it be retroactive to last Tuesday when we started open to the.
Okay, that's fine.
Sure, I mean, do we, do we say, like, three months, and then we revisit it?
I don't, I.
Because I'm assuming regardless of what happens, you're still going to need that help.
We can revisit it, thirty days or sixty days, whatever the time.
So indefinitely?
Four-week review or something, I don't, tell me you all want to do it.
Let's go thirty days.
Thirty-day review, that's fine, yeah. Why don't, we remember, let's see, what is today? Why don't we, why don't we?
At the end of September, or?
I would say, why don't we go, start at the first of the month, every month, and the first one will be in October. We'll review it the first of October, and then following every month thereafter.
Sure.
You want to put that in the motion, Don, that's fine.
Or just so we know.
Yeah.
It should be reviewed first of October.
Yeah, and so back to you on this fourteen.
Yes.
So I got.
Yes.
The Alga Walls moved to approve a one-dollar increase, and they just adjusted leadership roles, and it's very basis review, on October first, if that's you. On this fourteen.
Yes.
October first or first meeting of October?
Well, it'd be the first.
Yeah, the first Monday of October, sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Um, it would be the, the first.
It actually is the first.
Yeah.
That worked out.
Yeah.
No further discussion, all those great.
All right.
I saw that on TV, where that guy, you could tell him, ask him what day, and he could tell you the day of the week was on. I've got that skill.
Yeah.
It's not going to show it again for a while. And then I, we've got some numbers on, like, the Covman Bridge, on what we spent on it, and the estimated through the state was a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and it looks like, you know, we're going to get back a little bit less than two thousand dollars on that. And then for design utility and right of ways is around fifty-six thousand, so.
In addition to the hundred and forty-five?
Yeah, so we spent.
We spent the fifty-six plus the twenty percent from the one.
So we're, we got roughly two hundred thousand in that bridge.
And who did the design on that?
Uh, that was Schwab. And then it looks like for OS one eighty-seven, the estimated through the state on our twenty percent is going to be a hundred and thirty thousand, five twenty-six, with the design utility and right of way, about thirty-eight thousand. So we're going to have about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand on that bridge.
Okay, going back, the Covman one, you said the hundred and forty-five, that was our twenty percent?
Yes.
That was our twenty percent number, okay.
Yes.
Plus the fifty-six were the design, because we pay a hundred percent of that, and then.
Design utility and right of way, yes.
Yeah.
The fifty-six could be skewed a little bit, Liz didn't have enough time to nail it down for sure, but some of those could have been reimbursable stuff that we did get reimbursed.
But that was at least the initial cost that we.
Yeah.
Were probably spending, okay.
It seemed a little bit high to me for design utility.
Pretty deep, I know, it was deep.
It was a.
Well, it's a little more, I mean, it's fifteen thousand more on our end, that's twenty percent.
It wasn't quite straight either, was it?
It was. I believe it's on a skew also.
Skew, yeah, it's skewed.
A little bit, not much.
Okay, so where does that put us in your bridge budget?
I haven't seen the new one yet, so I don't have a copy of it. For this year or last year's?
Well, we're.
Upcoming.
We won't be paying any of this until the turn of the year?
What's that?
The OS. Have we paid all of the Covman project companies?
Yes.
So is any portion of the one eighty-seven coming out of this year's budget?
OS eighty-seven, I believe some of it will have came out of this.
Is it one eighty-seven or eighty-seven?
Eighty-seven.
I'm sorry.
One oh seven.
Sorry, okay.
It's like we got a hundred and sixty thousand in the special bridge, then.
One sixty?
Yeah.
Left this year.
It's the way I read this.
We should.
So then we should, out of this year's budget, hypothetically, be able to cover that project?
Should.
Approximately.
You know, I don't know when the state's going to require us to pay, it's going to let this calendar year, but it's not going to start building until next calendar year.
Right. And what did we put in, it wasn't much more than that that we put in?
We're limited to two mils. So the bridge, special bridge, right, Don?
Two mil would only be a hundred and seventeen, right?
But we try, try to keep carryover for.
That's limited, isn't it, Don, somewhere?
Yeah, it's limited to two mils. But it's the tax required, so if they have passion, it's like to carry over.
Yeah.
So the special bridge has a budget next year of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Yeah, I was thinking.
One eighty-seven.
Hundred and eighty, yeah.
With the thought that probably going to spend a hundred and fifteen this year.
Yeah.
If we spend more than that, we're going to be a budget of forty, for another budget next year.
That we're only going to spend a hundred and fifteen from this point on in the year?
Yeah.
Okay. Put us at a hundred and forty-five. So I get three thirty-two for the remainder of this year and next year, and it's only one fifteen for the remainder of this year, and a hundred and eighty-seven for next year. With what's left in there now. And a total of one sixty-eight for OS eighty-seven, correct?
Estimated, yes.
Six.
One seventy, yeah. Six number to plug here. Yeah, anywhere else? No, just to, we're going to have to, we are going to get some more asphalt than we anticipated. Called out to haze, they have some on the ground, but it was their ultimate mix at a hundred and thirty-one dollars a ton. Visited with haze, haze has got it for just regular coal mix for eighty dollars, so we're looking to haze to get. Slina said they could start making it sometime this week, and I told them that we need it now, so we're just going to haze. Did.
Have you visited Ottawa County about their overlay this year?
I have not.
I don't know what they're using, they've done quite a section there through Minneapolis, and I wasn't sure what. It's laid really nice, now whether it's going to last, I don't know, they've got it laid down really in good shape, and I don't know what they were using, and I just wondered.
It seems like that over five to seven years, they'll do that.
Yeah.
Full overlay, to be honest, our oils could use it, but it would be expensive.
Stuck to my car too a little, but I'll send them a bill.
That's all right.
Okay, where are we on using the mobile three-one-one program?
Yeah, it hasn't changed.
Well, I'm wondering what your plan is, I mean, you're the head of the department, you brought this program to us, we're paying for it monthly, we're in a contract, I mean, what's the plan here?
Probably need to have a department meeting with my guys and figure out what we're going to do with it. Either they're going to use it, or we're not going to be paying for it.
Well, I requested all the, all the paperwork as far as keeping track of concerns, road requests, et cetera, for the last year and a half. And quite frankly, it's a mess, and I think you know that already. The stack is about this thick, I have no idea how you're sorting it, there are notes, handwritten, typed, both, I mean. If you don't have a follow-up plan, I don't know how you're organized, do you feel organized?
For the most part, yes.
You do, and that stack of paper, you can tell me what's going on, because, I mean, they had to retrieve all these things from different tablets, different people's notes, different sources, I mean, there is not one consolidated piece of information that someone can request, so how are you doing that? How are you supervising that?
I guess you've seen it, so, I mean, we gave you how it's done, and the information goes to Bob, and Bob puts it into his work and puts together his list.
There's no list, I've asked for everything, it's a stack of papers, all different notes, hand ratings, follow-up notes from different people, there's no one list. That doesn't exist, that was what, that was why you brought us the mobile three-one-one program, remember? I'll be interested to, to know about your department meeting and see what you come up with.
Wait, you can move on. Grab my, yeah. Thank you, Michael.
No, thank you. Have a good meeting.
I just have a couple of things. I would like to put out bids to paint the storage shed. Do you know what's under that wood up at the top? Is that wood, or, I don't know, okay, that wood's getting kind of bad, I don't know if we can just paint it and make it.
Down about around the outside.
Up top?
Up top.
Yeah.
I think it's masonite siding, so they put up there.
Underneath it?
Just from memory, driving by there.
But I, I think if we get it painted before it totally falls apart, it probably will still be okay. But if we do that, I would like to remove those other two windows and those bars and the air conditioner and block those in, like we did on the front. Travis came over and said that sometime in there below, he probably could do that without any problem, he was going to get together a bid, but. Before I go and do anything about the painting or anything, I wanted to ask permission if it was okay that I did that. It's getting pretty shabby looking over there, and he said there are a couple, under the, this window on this side, there's a couple of places he needs to tuck point the concrete blocks, because it's cracking.
Yeah, get a bit, find out, get an estimate from him and see what the block will cover.
Okay, and then wait on the paint, or?
We statutorily have to receive bids for any kind of.
Well, I understand that, but I'm not going to waste my time getting bids if you guys don't want me to move forward with the project.
I don't have a problem with these things, when you keep building it up or utilizing the storage shed.
Well, I'm afraid we're going to have to completely replace all that wood if we don't do something to, masonite or whatever. And Michael did have the engineer come out and look at that side, and they talked about some drains or something, but I know he's been back twice and hasn't mentioned it, so I just was going to remind you that he hasn't looked at it, but, um. Okay, but, so I don't know, I mean, I thought he was going to talk to you guys about it, but you might mention it to him the next time he's here.
We can do that, we'll try to remember the asking about it.
Okay, and then we've been working, we have a CDRR grant, which is chronic disease risk reduction, which is from the. And then we've been working, we have a CDRR grant, which is chronic disease risk reduction, which is from the Tabaco settlement years and years ago. We get a grant every year for that, and a lot of it has to do with the kids at school and smoking, but part of it has to do with smoking in outside areas. The Lincoln Park and the Silver Grove Park, both have worked with us, and, and there's no smoking allowed in those two places. There's no enforcement to it, but the signs are there and most people don't smoke. But, um, for the past several weeks, um, people are smoking in front of our office while they're waiting for different appointments and things like that. And I would like to make our entire outside area smoke-free. I think it looks pretty bad when we're trying to work on that in different places, and yet people are out front of our office, smoking away. I don't like it, and I would just prefer to make, I know we can't enforce it so much, you know, like on a Saturday night at the V in the back. You know, we're not gonna have the cops write tickets or anything, but a lot of people won't smoke if there's a sign. But in the front, I have no problem going out and saying, you can't smoke up here if there's a sign there, but.
Put up sign, I'll worry about this.
That it's a non-smoking mobile free campus, or whatever I can come up with?
Yeah, it's a free campus, I think that's the, that's one region, down there, sorry.
Do we need a resolution to do that, or I can just make a policy?
I could answer that. I would put up a sign and see how much it helps.
Okay.
Might need that a sign.
Okay, well, in my research, there's sample policies of sample resolution, but there's sample all kinds of things. So, um, put up the signs and see how it goes, and then go from there. Because like I said, I don't have a problem going out and telling them they can't smoke, but I have to have something behind that to, to justify it, so, that's all I have this morning.
Are you prepared to pay for your remodeling out of this year's budget, is that your plan?
No, I plan to pay for it out of capital outlay.
In this year's budget, is what I'm saying? Or are you saying it's something you're doing next year?
No, it's not in the budget, it's in the capital outlay, which isn't budgeted, so it's be-
Your capital outlay would be either rolled over from last year or budgeted, right?
Rolls over, yes.
So you're planning to do that out of this year's, is what I'm, that's my question?
Yes.
For next year?
No, I'd like to get it done before winter, so, there's sixty-some dollars in the dollars.
We're taking a month to find it. Very fast, it is. Yep, you got sixty-one thousand, seventy-three dollars and seventy-nine cents.
We haven't had any major purchases out of their share. Had one, I don't even think.
End of July.
I don't think we do either.
Are you getting it all done as one bid, with the blockwork that you want done and the painting?
It'd have to be two separate, because I, when we got the front window done, it took us forever to get one bid for that one, so I don't think whoever does the cement work will do the painting work. So it would have to be two separate bids.
Well, it's legal as long as we get bids.
I will see what the blockwork comes in, and then I will try to figure out something for bids and come back next week. Okay?
All right.
Very short recess before we start the employee meeting.
We fine? You want, there's copy, there's extra copies if somebody else wants it. I'll just give them the department heads one. Anybody that wants one, there's certainly a lot for joining in. They also are available in the county clerk's office.
As we're going to get our budget in our days, we've got to take care of all at one time. We adjusted some of the budgets a little better than what they were when they were proposed. Remember exactly which ones. You have, you have one to change?
Yeah. I'm on page seven B. Where we can start. County commission, where it is that, from what was proposed to forty-eight thousand. There was a, salaries were decreased. Mission, using the same salary as two thousand seventeen, or eighteen, I'm sorry. And... The salaries were figured at fifty cents an hour across the board. County attorney's request was lowered, salary was lowered, as well as the commodities, because plans are to bring the county attorney into the courthouse. Didn't think it'd take quite as many commodities possibly. And also, the contractual was, contractual was reduced significantly because we're going to employ a secretary for the attorney, county attorney, as a county employee. Registry of deeds, we lowered the salary a little line. We also lowered the commodities line because of past history. We also are going to ask that the registry of deeds reimburse the appraiser's office for the time, instead of you putting a salary in, so we got rid of the salary. Uh, we left that, because we were actually doubling that up, she was, she was doing a full-time and you were doing a part-time, so we just left it at a full-time. And we'll ask you to fill out cards, and there'll be a reimbursement to the county appraiser.
We looked at that, there had been, we ran for, and I don't really, hours wise, so.
Both departments were budgeting for the same position cross gather.
I understand, I understood, I understood what he said.
We made some adjustments to the sheriff, uh, I think we lowered it four thousand dollars, but we made some adjustments into the current budget. Reduced salaries over there, uh, because they had not hired that full-time deputy that they planned on, so there's some savings there. Think we also decreased the commodities a little, but we also, in doing so, we increased the, uh, contractuals.
I think on the sheriff, we lowered the curve here.
Yeah. Okay, and then, and the clerk of the district court, we adjusted the reimbursements there. It appears that we didn't budget enough reimbursements for two thousand eighteen, and then we put some in that was not in the budget presented by the district court. Rest of the, go to page seven C. I don't think we made any adjustments in emergency preparedness. Reappraisal, the only note I have here is that there needs to be a billing between the county appraiser and the county, uh, register deeds. That's, uh, so, uh... We didn't put in a reimbursement in that line, but there will start being, I assume in two thousand, a reimbursement. There'll be some reimbursement to your office, it'll show up, but we did not put any in. Down to communications, again, we, uh, we did some moving of numbers there in the current budget. We lowered it from looking at last year's and what we anticipate, we lowered the total for last year, for two thousand eighteen, a hundred and fifty-four thousand. And we lowered the total for the communications to a hundred and sixty thousand, uh, for the current year, for next year, for nineteen. And those come out of salaries, we adjusted that down, we lowered the commodities from past history of what we're seeing spent. And there was degrees in the contractuals too, both in eighteen and nineteen. Seven D. The juvenile detention center, uh, I'm sorry, services on the elderly, uh, which we can levy up to two mils, because that's a sixth, seventh line down. We lowered that back to seventy-five thousand, what we've been budgeting in the previous years. Down a few more lines, you'll find juvenile detention. We had a thousand for eighteen, we put five hundred in, we hadn't used the facility in eighteen, though I got a printout yesterday from juvenile detention, and we have used it in the month of August, or in the month of July, probably. So, but I think we're still, five hundred dollars is the minimum that we contribute to that budget. We are allowed so many days, and once we exceed those days, and it's charged, they charge us a, I believe it's a hundred and forty or a hundred and fifty dollars a day for those juveniles down there. We have not in the past used all our days up, usually have them left over, so that's, but the five hundred is a minimum for the counties. I think Lincoln County may be the only county that is at the minimum level. The larger counties such as Celine and Gary contribute heavily to the juvenile detention budget. Yes?
Is LAPD program, is that SHON?
Yeah.
Yes, that is SHON.
Does he submit a budget, or?
Uh, we are under contract with them, right, Don?
Yes.
Courtroom security line down there, we had budgeted in the past, uh, we didn't have any budget in eighteen, showed up in nineteen, we again zeroed that out. The courtroom security has been being handled by the sheriff's department presently, it's in their budget. I think visiting with the other counties at the juvenile detention center, courthouse security is becoming a problem. Dickerson County just went into full security, or will go into full security next year. There, we'll have metal detectors and they will have somebody at the door. And they're doing it through a security outfit in Slina, so, uh, you know, I think we're all need to be aware that that's an eye thing, even in all departments, that security is important. Certainly will want you to be safe. That, that's something I see from the other counties, that people are talking about more and more, how they're gonna secure their facilities. But, thank you to the sheriff's department, we're having that budget. And that's all I found on page seven D. Page ten. And down on the noxious weed. We did some adjustments there based on what we foresee, uh, we, we did lower the salaries, uh, as we compared to what was being spent this year. And then plus the increase, we lowered that to thirty-seven thousand. We made an adjustment in the two thousand eighteen budget on contractual, because it didn't appear that we were spending near that eleven thousand that had been there, so we lowered it to nine thousand. And the capital outlay fund. Don't think about this. We, we did not, we did not budget for capital outlay fund, we felt the capital outlay fund was enough, and if there's leftover, that's transferred over into it anyway.
I think we also talked about if you have a replacement need for a vehicle, that that was incorporated into our, um, capital improvement, wasn't it? No?
No, if they have a capital outlay fund.
He has a much capital outlay.
Well, there was something in the, when we signed the new resolution, there was something about one of the pieces of equipment at the landfill. I guess that wouldn't be for noxious weed, though, that would be-
On page eleven, county health department. Transferred to the county health department outlay fund, uh, we took, there was a number in our proposal of, I think it's fourteen thousand, a little over fourteen thousand, we took that out to zero again. County health department, we've been rolling money over into their capital outlay fund, and it's, today we looked at it, and it's at sixty-one thousand, so. That lowered the total budget on the county health department down to a hundred and ten thousand, a hundred and seventy-five, I think that's right, is that what's on your papers?
Any questions?
Yes.
The receipts. The total receipts.
Total receipts. I don't have that marked as being changed, but it may have been one we missed. Hundred and fourteen, one sixty-five, so I have. On this old one? I don't know, I don't know, I assume that was the number given, because that's what was on the, the original copy. I assume that was the number given, because that's what was on the original copy.
If you know, because you put out one of the tax over there. Just some of those things.
Okay, that's where it's...
Because your household and taxes are very far.
I was just making sure you weren't comparing it to the year-to-date and double it. Most of our income ends in this person next to party.
Okay.
But I didn't read the sheet, I don't remember.
All right. On page 12, remind me, who does on the same page? Ambulance service.
Do we have a department health for ambulance service?
We did add, we did, we, in the original, there was nothing for ambulance runs, cash, income. We did put $75,000 back in that budget. And the expenditures, we adjusted '18's salaries, lowered it by $27,000 by looking at what's there. And for next year, we lowered what had been projected, about $14,000. We did up the contractual service, well, I guess we lowered the contractual services that was proposed, and we put $25,000 into the capital outlay fund. It had been at $50,000, we lowered it to $25,000, which lowered that budget, that budget is, was lowered, proposed budget was lowered about $49,000.
The prior two years' budgets you had done, Dawn, correct? Or one year?
Correct.
Two?
I think I did the 2017 budget, and I think the 2018, based upon what I, so, and I just didn't know I did the 2017.
That first column shows you the actual expenses for '17 the auditor came up with, so some of this budgeting is, we're looking at '17 what we actually spent. This way, we adjust some of those numbers. Down to employee benefits. We juggled some of those numbers. Capers, we could reduce. Number one is because we don't have, didn't have as many employees as we thought we might have. Workman's comp, again, we were able to lower that from projections. And unemployment insurance, we've been doing pretty well there, so we were able to lower that one down. Medical insurance, we're at around $900,000. We anticipated $900,000, as you see in the budget for '18. Last year, we had budgeted a little over $1 million. This year, we're budgeting $1,150,000. Have to remember, we're bringing on another employee. We also had a couple of employees equipped that were single, and we anticipate hiring family plans. We always budget for family plans, just in case, so that's why that number. We also seen a significant increase in the premium cost of that health insurance too. Of course, that is still a 90-10 ratio. You pay 10, we pay 90. We're still there. We have decided to look at other insurance policies during the next year, 2019. Our contract with the state ends in 2019, so we were looking at whether we need to go out. That is another issue that I have learned at the county meetings. Counties are beginning to go out and shop for other insurance besides the state. We also have some counties that are coming out of the other insurance and back into the state pool. So it appears to me it's kind of a toss-up. I don't know whether it has with the health of the group or not, but the state has been, we've been seeing some pretty significant increases, I think, at the state. I'm not sure why that is, but...
Question about that?
Yeah.
Will there be any involvement from department?
Yes, there will be. We want, we will want employee input once we get started. We'll probably hire an insurance broker to do this.
Well, and an important part of that, too, is like the hospital and the clinic and myself, some insurance companies we can't build because we're not providers, or things like that, and you really need to let us know what's going on.
Yeah.
So we can kind of try to, if we can't bill it, then it makes it where people can't come to the health department or hospital, or we try.
Yeah.
But not all of them are, not all insurance companies want to work with health departments.
As we move on, I'm on page 14. These are basically things that have happened prior to. These are capital outlay funds. First one is the ambulance. We're only going to budget for $25,000 transfer, so that lowered, we adjusted that one down. County health, capital outlay, we budgeted zero, so that changed that one. You have, you have the corrections on yours. On page 15, same thing happened at noxious weed. We decided not to levy for capital outlay funding in. And then you can go to page 21, is where it's finalized.
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't really think about it. You guys have all the fire registries and cemetery registries, so I didn't think about it. So we'll have a bunch more since we...
Looking on page 21 is basically the summary. You see that the county in '17 spent almost $9 million. And we had a levy of $110 mils, a little over $100. We're estimating in 2018 to cut that down to 7.8, or almost 7.9 million, it's $107. Next year, we are planning expenditures of 8.4.
I didn't update that one.
Huh?
I didn't update.
Oh, you didn't update that?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on the wrong one. I'm reading the wrong one. Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry. In '18, we anticipate spending 7.6 million, a little over 7. It's $107 mils. In '19, we're proposing 8.6 million. We're going to have to raise almost $6 million of that through taxes, which would put the levy at $102.152 mils. That mil levy will change when final tabulations of the assessed property, the county clerk verifies those, so that could change. Usually either goes up or down a little bit, depending on what we find in assessed valuation. I guess we did not, for the first time, I think, since I've been on the commission, we did not tamper with the road department budget this year. You have any questions? Because I would just say this is tight. It will remain tight. That extra spending will come back to haunt us. But everything we save in one year helps us in the next year, I guess. It's just kind of like home. We can roll some of that money over. We have opportunities to do things. Certainly this year, we have been requested for much more help than in the past, and we have had some cash to do some of those things.
Anybody have a question?
If your center number was changed, I will try, like the Dickens, to have it changed from obvious budget number that you get, guarantees, just anything that isn't needed. But I'll try to get that center somewhere, here for some agents.
Current year.
For the current year, yeah. I'm sure not being about, because it's effective, and if you have a specific report, I'll give you some guidance.
Any third-party requests were limited to the consumer price index of 1.44, what we were given by the state. Not allow anything go up above that. And we do not have to have a vote in this county. We are well under what the 1.44 CPI was. Does anyone have, yes, LaDonna?
Have you, do you have a specific way you want evaluations done, request reasons, or you know, have you know anything about that yet? Have you discussed that yet?
I think we probably need to have a department meeting to discuss a, make sure everybody's on the same page on those, but that's not, today, I don't think we have the time to.
I know we skipped over it, but we did budget for a full-time, a new full-time position, and that would be HR. So currently, Dawn is not hiring in her office yet, so what we did was we created a full-time position for an HR staff. And that, we'll be doing interview process here within the month, and hopefully hiring. So I would assume that we're not going to follow up thoroughly on the evaluations until that person is somewhat integrated, because that will be who you report to as far as turning in employee information. So we talked about maybe an October 1st start date for that person, and hopefully, October, November, December, that person could be somewhat integrated by the turn of the year when we would be doing that. So has anyone finished evaluations, gotten 50% done?
I've started mine. Or...
And somehow we're waiting to go forward, and you're not going to have a personal evaluation. I don't know what to... My hopes was, was that maybe this person, our first project, will be to help us give evaluation, or put tournaments to give evaluation, so also help if we are going to go to merit based system for wage increases in 2019, help commissioners come up with a plan on how that's going to work. That was my hope, because I don't really have...
Right. We have eight applications, so if someone takes the position we offer and it works out, they'll have the last quarter of the year to be integrated into whatever they need to learn for our particular needs. And we do have people with some HR experience. Based on that, hopefully, we can use them for some advice on moving forward that process. And I think we approved, it wasn't until after January, well, did we approve that last year? Because it was a 50 cent raise across the board last year. Did we do it for January or not until February?
We did it in January, and you guys discussed what kind of decisions made, whatever, and we'll be back next year, or going through to a merit-based.
But it's budgeted in for a maximum 50 cent increase per hour, per employee in each department.
So maybe you guys will need to decide what the, you was discussing, and what you have as merit-based and what some evaluations are.
I have a question of curiosity. Has anyone here been employed in the private sector and received a cost of living increase in their wages every year, like they, like we've done here for about, I don't know, seven or eight years? Anyone ever received that in a job that was privatized? A yearly fixed rate increase in their salary? Or hour? It's a nice perk.
I know that in the private sector, you pass for myself and for my daughters, you work in the private sector, they also get a huge bonus, and it's probably more than what my cost of living is. So it's just a different, you know, it's just a different word.
Do they also get longevity pay? Or just the bonus?
Yes, they, the qualification and stuff increases for artists that, you know, they work there in their community, so...
Well, you accumulate time off, right?
Right.
You accumulate it as you go.
Right.
And then you get longevity pay on top of that.
The longevity...
No, no.
Well, you can, say eighty hours. You know, our vacation doesn't change. Somebody's work or leave, somebody's worked two months, it's the same time off, you get 12 hours a month. Doesn't it? It's the same. The longevity pay came out because they used to give out one day for every five years worth of leave time. But then we got...
For additional vacation.
Yes. And so, so that would be the increasing factor, except for when you give as much as we get for the leave time, and you have an employee that's been here for 40 years, they can't use it all. And then when we cut it back to where they couldn't carry over more than 80 hours, you know, we had, where employees could be gone up to five weeks, if not more, period of year. And so they decided to cut out that extra day and then just pay them instead of the day off. So that's how the longevity pay came in.
So are you advocating that you go back to just accumulating time off instead of longevity pay after it's been capped or...
Not necessarily. I'm just, you keep making a comparison with private sector. It's just a different word. It's not longevity pay, they just get more leave time. I mean, I have a friend who's worked it for 20 years in the same company, and she gets three months a year off and even vacation, because she's worked here so long, so she doesn't get longevity pay. So it's just a trade-off. The same with bonuses, you know, my daughter last year got a $3,000 bonus. That's more than 50 cents an hour for me. So it's just a different possibility, it's just a different word. So when you say the private sector doesn't get it, yeah, a lot of the private sector does.
I didn't say that. I was just asking...
Maybe around here, but it's just a different word.
Do you feel underpaid?
I do as an RN, yes, I do. But new RNs at the hospital make more than I do, so, yeah, I do. So, but I do realize the benefits make up for that in a family plan, which I don't need now, but I didn't need, and I understand the value of it, so that's why, you know, I'm not up here complaining about what I'm getting paid, but when you start taking things away by saying, you know, because the private sector did it, I just don't care.
So you would advocate for a 50 cent raise across the board for every employee rather than doing evaluations?
Not necessarily, but there should be a cost of living of some sort, I believe. I think merit pay is okay, again, that's if everybody's valuing it the same way. So, you know, maybe if you get an HR person that's on the board, they could have part of evaluations, so one department isn't getting all the max, and the next department is getting less. You know, I think it's really hard to value somebody in the clerk's office, and somebody at the health department, and somebody at the highway department. We all have very different jobs, and there's no way you can care across the board, so it's just tough for supervisors, I think, sometimes to know what the right means to do.
Do we have any suggestions for a cost of living out of what portion of that 50 cents
The most important thing to remember is all of us have worked here, I think the first couple of years I worked here, there was a merit-based increase. And I want to say one year it was five cents. And not that I wasn't appreciative of it, and I think the other employees were appreciative, but it almost seemed like it was an insult more than it was anything else. So I think if we figure it out, we just haven't been used to it, so we'll have to figure it and figure out the current process, I guess, to be able to say.
No, that's why, that's why I'm asking. Well, that's why, that's why I'm asking for a suggestion on a base cost of living increase, what percentage of that 50 cents would be base cost of living increase versus the rest of it as availability to gain based on evaluation?
I don't know what is fair and what isn't fair. I, I know my employee that I have left doesn't think the most money in the county. It would be difficult not to give her, you know, a decent cost of living and maybe a lower merit. I, that's where I struggle with this and then I feel like because I do only have over two employees, how do you not to give them something? But then I also understand the bigger departments, that they have to be able to make more of those employees that are part of those groups to continue to keep them, you know, to, I think.
Well, and as you mentioned, Ladonna, I think the, the benefits package in and of itself is something that passed away in. If we continue to pay 90% of whatever that cost is to us, you know, that's, that's different. That reduces our ability to up hourly wage and then there's not as much incentive for any employee to find their own private plan, which may wager out for them in their benefit if they're finding a lower cost plan and increasing their dollar amount per hour. But we're not legally allowed to entice an employee to reject our group plan so that they can make more money. And that, in my mind, is unfortunate because some people want the health insurance over the pay and then vice versa. So it's a, and our group health rates do affect, I know you mentioned that earlier, LJ, you weren't sure, that is definitely a factor. So as our pool that we belong to increases claims, our cost goes up. So we added, what was the increase last year? 10%? And I can't, I'm not sure, in, for two years in a row, it's been about 10% now.
If you say it increases claims, then what do you mean by that? Again, claims, I go to my urologist, I'm pulling pastes, so then that's a claim, correct? So I'm being punished for doing my job of being a good, law-abiding, healthcare-conscious person that, that not only does the county ask of us, but again, the responsibility by, by the provider of the services, La Crosse Michel, man makes that. I do that, I do a claim, so then yet I'm being punished for doing what I'm supposed to do. Explain that. There is no logic to that.
That's the logic.
It's not, it's not you that is a health conscious, it's those that produce it, goes to the doctor and then all of a sudden, wham, have a stroke, a heart attack, cancer.
Well, even if they've been going to the doctor and they still put in for that claim, it doesn't matter what your history and checkups were. Once that claim happens as some sort of.
I think that's why the state is trying to push that healthy, yes, those preventative items to catch those things a little bit sooner before they become catastrophic.
But it's a moot point with the grid system condition.
Yes, yes.
And I can't help that. That's what's in your work.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm stopped and spread regardless.
Well, and I think that's why a hot topic has been healthcare nationally, for sure.
I think maybe a question that I have is, let's say we go out and we clarify our burden behind an insurance company that is, that we can get for a lot less. Is there monetary compensation or, or something that will divert some of the funds back to employees to where maybe we are or are not competitive? I can tell you the highway department employees are probably not competitive, and that's probably why we have the turnover that we have, just knowing because my son is in that same realm of, of work. But the question would be is, is the overall goal going to be just to reduce the employee benefits side or, you know, if we, let's say, like our deductible went from $300 to $3,000 in one year. If the deductible increases a little bit more, is there a help for the employees on the salary side to help offset that? That's just kind of what I'm asking. The employees question me about or ask me about, that makes me stop to, because.
Well, you have to take it in terms of percentages. So regardless of the cost dollar-wise, the county is still absorbing 90% approximately of all the plans. We're mandated in the, in the contract that we have now to pay 90% of the individual's plan. And then we opted to go ahead and pay 90% if you have a spouse, you know, self and spouse plan or family plan, either way. So, but the way I understood it the last time we had that discussion, Dawn, is that we cannot individually compensate by hourly wage or salary to offset someone's health insurance. So if you opt out of.
To not take a plan.
Right. Or to take a lesser plan.
Let's just say, let's say you're example that, like one of these people that I talked to in the clerks association meeting that they got, said they saved the county 700,000 dollars a year, you know, a small county our size. Now that's, I, I'm just throwing a number out there. I have to think it was sort of 500,000, but let's just say it's 500,000 dollars a year that they saved. Can maybe other alternatives to offer for employees be, instead of diverting, having the money budgeted in employee benefits, we divert it and put the money in to increase the wages?
Salary line items.
Yeah. Is, is my thoughts.
Right.
Or bring back life insurance or?
I think everyone could appreciate the salary line item increase over and above other benefits, depending on your age and what your interests are, but I, I mean, that's what I would say.
I hope, I, and I want to name that person, I'm sure. I think there are some savings and I think that our plan is our own, but I just, yeah. It's scary to switch.
The budget.
Especially people that have chronic health issues. It's, it's scary.
The budget that we just set for 2019 includes our, that was a 1.15 million for our health insurance for all the employees. That's our last year in state pool contract. So, and I know you said that before, but that means we have a year to look. And I think hopefully with the way that the markets have been changing, there may be some more viable options. And like you said, you may not be able to bill certain companies, so we want to keep an eye on that.
Well, and a lot of them get rid of immunizations out there by the pool. You know, the banks have those policies and these parents are paying 200, 300 dollars because they have health insurance, so they can't get the free stuff out of their bills and let their kids in shock and not covered by the insurance companies. Their family have pocketed them. So when you look at insurance plans, they might be a lot cheaper, but you also have to look at, you know, how many, how many kids do we have in that age gap that, you know, parent, you know, we're going to have to, or is the deductible going to be 10 dollars a year or, you know, you can get cheaper plans, I'm sure you can, but you gotta, I'm not saying all of them you would get less benefits, but you just have to look really carefully because.
Right. But that 50 cents an hour is 1,040 dollars a year. So, you know, if you can jump a dollar or two, that's a couple thousand dollars. And if you're talking about an increased expense of 500 dollars, you're still gaining as, as employee. So, and, and we can't do those calculations for every single person, we don't even know what their plans may be.
But you kind of have to know in general what your, what your, because I can tell you those bank employees are not really happy with their insurance that they have.
Can you get us a list of insurance companies that will not contract with you, that won't?
Well, right now, there's just a few, but like the hospital went to a new plan with BMI, I have to fill out paper claims. We can't use our computer systems, we can't. We have to type, I drag typewriter out of and type paper claims, which take forever. And had they discussed that with me, I would have said it would be really good. And it's not that my system won't do it, the clearinghouse that does the whole United States won't even add that insurance company because BMI is its own little thing out here.
Are they new? Are they new?
No.
No, we had them a long time ago. But, I mean, it, it was a disaster and it's starting, I mean, it's, and it's not, I mean, we might have to type two paper claims a month. It's not, it's just, all things being equal, if we knew that ahead of time or if the hospital would have informed us, and we usually don't know until somebody comes in and then we can't deal with it. Tricare is one that is historically that. Um, I, there's a lot of people in our county that have this Christian insurance company. That's major medical that's put in a pool, that's not technically even health insurance. It covers no immunization, it covers, I mean, it's very limited on what it covers. And people will bring it and say, here, I have health insurance. No, you don't. You didn't read the fine grant. This is not health insurance. This is major medical, if you have a task, it's not health insurance at all. It says right on the bar, this is not health.
Well, we're mandated to provide that, being over 50 employees, so we won't have that particular problem.
But I, yeah, I know, I just know that if you go with some real off company, be really careful to investigate and find out who they are, who they have and call that county or that company and say, what are your employees, what's the issue that you have? Because when you get to the small ones, they're maybe out, offer a better price, that's what happens. So and reimbursement rates are different, you know? Tricare only pays, not us, but Tricare only pays about half of the vaccines are worth to, to people that, what they cost us, Tricare pays about half of that. Because I've seen their list, see if we even want to try to get Tricare to take us. And I talked to Mr. Moran, when he was, he would see us with that same problem, and now I don't even want Tricare to want us because they only pay half of what I pay for the vaccine. So why would I do that? So you have to be really careful about what the reimbursement. And it, like I said, health department affects a little bit, but, but every little bit helps us. The hospital would affect probably quite more significantly, so they should probably be part of that too. Uh, you know, when you get close to the end of society, you know, I pick, I would surely want that.
Anybody else have anything? Well, we're in the January, we're going to take a look at spatialization in the courthouse. So any of you that are involved in that drop or decide to stay, I guess if you don't have office space in the courthouse, you can go back to work at this.
Thank you.
Judge.
I learned Judge Grayson's out there.
That, see if that has a partition wall in the jury corner. That, that's, that's just the photo wall that's right here.
This wall, is this the wall right here? Yeah, I should, the wall here, they just, you, you, you drew a, a word out here. What's that?
Yeah.
That's not it. That's, 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 that's a, 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 that's
Thank you.
They have nothing interior structural, like weight there, so it's just...
If there is, it would be a change. One thing that we kind of came across with is the possibility, maybe, of utilizing this little building out here. It takes some work, but we could gain significant space. They run out of measures, just like 24 by 20. It's been used for different offices in the past. Right now, it's got a lot of stuff in it. But the floor plan in there could be changed, interior wall, the structure other than the ceiling. That would alleviate a lot of the problem, or part of the problem. There'll still have to be a little bit of juggling.
Jennifer, what would we utilize that for?
Well, we're not sure. If we would go, you know...there are several people that are probably going to have to move. David, I think, is going to have to probably go. I don't know if it would work for the county attorney office. It's just something that we kind of came up with this morning, really, that we talked about earlier. We haven't really got a chance to look at it and discuss it other than its possibility to move someone out there. It would easily work for David because he doesn't...he's in the courthouse, so he doesn't really need to be in the courthouse.
And I don't have that many people to come up and visit me either on a regular basis. I couldn't say five per week, and that's random.
I think one of the first things we may need to establish is where is everybody's storage? And how can we organize and consolidate that? Because I think what we've heard a lot of is this office has a little bit over here and a little bit over there, and old stuff that we need to keep or old stuff that we don't need to keep. And one of the first discussions we had was the room for storage behind the courtroom. If we were to utilize that for something for the county attorney, you know, is there stuff up there that can be pitched or sold or thrown away? What kind of consolidation process can we have? And I think it's been quite a few years since they...anyone's done a clean out, I believe.
So, can...
And I did clean out our sections there. So, we went through all of our stuff, and it was valuable there for sure which was which. We have kind of consolidated the...
And I don't think there's any intention of moving anything that has to do with the district court office being right with the...
That was back in storage room.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, I see what you're saying. Okay, so whatever's up there, you're saying would be other departments...
I'm pretty confident that what's up there is...
Not for you. Okay.
The clerk's office, I have the election equipment. I do have some election equipment to get rid of, but we keep five years' worth of everything. So, basically, I have two involved kind of here prior year and then three other years. So, I would have to ask some place in which to store that stuff. We have census materials that are forever. Do they necessarily have to be in a storage room? I'm not sure. I don't know. I really don't. They could go to historical society or not, if it's a move. But that's the type of stuff that I have up there. If we do move...I have the election equipment inside the closet in the commission room as well. So, if whatever office takes that office over needs that space, I would need a space for the lock. My items, yeah, that is constantly locked. And that's part of the reason why I was concerned about building into the storage room. Because I guess, I look at the size of it, I think what they would need for space and the fact that there's no boiler heater in that area, on that...in that corner is where the breakers are. And there's really no electricity. I think they installed some electricity in this light back there a couple of years ago. But other than that, there's no outlets, there's nothing, no AC. So, it just...that's part of the reason why I brought up the conversation about maybe reorganizing what we have down below to the levels. But it doesn't mean that it shouldn't be done, couldn't be done upstairs. Extension? Sorry. And we still have bad, um, you can smell upstairs. I just am really concerned with anybody wanting to walk in there. So, sorry. Go ahead, Lisa.
Uh, Extension, we just have up in the storage room, we kind of just have a small corner up there, but we have some stuff up there that we could clean, could definitely clean out. And we also talked about our storage that we kind of have down here. It's not great storage back in this little room right here, but we did clean a lot of that out this past year. And so, we don't have near as much in there as we used to. And we could probably consolidate that into another location if we needed to, if that's something we could help with from a storage standpoint.
And I believe some of my files are in the old health department, some of them are upstairs. I had consolidated those, but when my office was taken by David, when we moved, I think, Mr. Job, then all of my things had to be relocated. So, I'm kind of spread out everywhere to a certain degree. Now, can I destroy some of those? Yeah. But have I had to go in the health department and actually get files? Yes, I did a month ago, 30 years ago.
Well, you probably can't move much until you know where you're going.
No.
Yes. Is that house a possibility, Jennifer?
I haven't been in it, but I...I mean, my biggest concern...I apologize, I'll stand. I think my biggest concern when I requested this was for there to be some public safety issue. And I think we just need to address that the same people that the sheriff's office are dealing with are the same people that I deal with. They have bulletproof glass, they have some obstruction that stops people from coming in. I have nothing. So, I think that we need to be thinking about that. My first preference is to be on the third floor because I think from a cost benefit down the road, if we're going to have to do some courtroom security, I think it would be easier to contain. But I'm open to things. You know, do I feel like the county attorney's office upstairs at David's currently insufficient? No, it's a very small room. There's no way that my staff and myself can be in that room at the same time without tripping all over each other. And I know there's been some discussion about kind of flipping rooms and doing things. I'm okay with all of that. You know, I just think we want to...I want to just look down a couple of years to see what we need so that we can be in a position so we're not constantly transferring everyone over. I mean, my decision to move up to the courthouse wasn't to push everyone into every different direction. I realize that, and I appreciate Ms. Marlowe's work because she's consulted with me many times about what I would be comfortable with and not comfortable with. So, I'm okay as long as we talk about what that public safety issue is and how we deal with that appropriately.
Does a clerk of the district court have to be in that bigger room? And if we moved into your old office and you move into that one, is that...
I don't think that's available.
Okay.
Because they need access to the vault that has all of their stuff in there. So, you know, the only discussion would be potentially flip-flopping the jury room and the county attorney's room with the caveat that we would probably have to move in at some point to the storage if that was appropriate. But that's going to be expenditure for the county endeavor to do. Because I think if we're doing that, we're going to have to also do increased storage that has to be locked and all these other things. And when I looked up there, I think the heating issue that Ms. Marlowe brought up is very important, the cooling issue, as well as there probably needs to be enough sufficient clean out to make sure there's no health issues associated with anybody being in there.
Does the jury room need to be on the same floor? Because that was my concern. I mean, with the juries, we're at 20, 20 years, 17.
It really does.
We also have storage in the jury room. Four, six file cabinets in there, four of them have the big current files. And so, we do access those regularly, move the files.
Is the court...is the courtroom extra big? I mean, is it so large that we could cut it down some way to create a jury room that we don't use very often?
Yes, it is large for our day-to-day use. When we did...I've only had one jury trial since I've been here. But it was a pretty packed, packed room while we were doing the jury selection. We had, I think, 100, 110 people in there, plus attorneys. It was pretty close quarters there for a little while, but then once all that jury selection was done, so I guess...
Are we obligated to have a big enough place for that?
Yes. With that back wall of the courtroom that he brought out, maybe six feet? And that would create, free up a lot of space back there that you could do a lot with in terms of the jury room, in terms of office space. But then you have to make sure that you have appropriate ventilation and heat and all that.
I think that, you know, courtroom security is going to become a bigger issue, like everybody says. I just think we need, myself, I think we need to figure out a plan to have the county attorney in that area. Because we can go in there and start moving all these people around, and then in a couple of years, they're gonna...they're gonna come out with something else on courthouse security that we're gonna have to take her up there anyhow. So, I just... I think you're right. And I...in my younger days, I did the remodel on the sheriff's office, and we put bulletproof glass in there because the people, they didn't have control. The people that came through the door, they were just sitting there in the open. We put in all the electric locks on the doors and the bulletproof glass, and somehow they have a barrier between them and whoever walks in the door. They have to let them in. You had an electrical issue, Leanne, in your driver's license, did you?
Yes.
If we...
But it is bigger than the commission room, and I have no problem moving across. No problem with that. And we've stepped it out, and there's enough room for the camera. And maybe if we do get that room and Don can move some of his stuff somewhere, maybe we can put some of the tax rolls that are permanent record and we have to keep them. Maybe we can put some in there and free up more space upstairs.
Well, I was wondering about, but if we could move the driver's license over there and possibly put human resources for the driver's license, it's a little bigger room.
Do those have to be kept on site?
Tax rolls?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I'll have to find out.
David, do you think it'd be possible to fit your equipment in to the room that's connected to the clerk's office?
I think it could be, yes. I have a lot of stuff, yes. Some of the stuff is from my predecessor, yes. But I don't want to discard that stuff. That's the worst part of it. But again, it takes some looking at, but I could fit that bill in, I would, yes. Or again, if there was required of me, I could go out, get to that, I could go out to that, that bulletproof glass, whatever would accommodate everybody.
We need to take a look at that building and see what cost would be to renovate it.
Jennifer, would you be opposed to being in the basement until we made some decisions on construction options if we were to do some large project on the third floor?
My concern would be with that was what your decision-making process and the time limitation you would have. Because if I'm going to be going into a certain office, I need to be...I'm not going to be buying a bunch of things to accommodate wherever I'm at. I would like to do that once. That's why in this budget year, I've tried to be so frugal with my money, hoping that I can utilize this budget year to buy some equipment and do some other things that we're going to need in the process. I mean, I truly believe I need to be on the top floor. You know, even if I were to be up there in some room, it's doable if there is going to be a transition point at some point. That's what I just want to discuss. You know, if you all are like, you know, "We don't have any money to do this. Maybe in like four years, we can deal with it," then that's gonna begin like, "Well, maybe I need to go just someplace else until we kind of figure that out." But I'm not...I'm not rushing you or trying not to rush you. I just feel like the bigger picture is at some point, I need to be on the third floor. And I don't know how we're going to do that without spending some money to renovate the storage.
I don't think that you're talking...if you were to go to the jury room and then build another little room into the storage area there, you're not talking about that much of expense. You're just basically building an enclosure in there.
Where would my files that are in the jury room then go? When they try to fit into David's office?
Is that the wall cabinets? Is that what you're saying? The big wall cabinets?
Yes, I've got three of those, four of those in that room, and then two other cabinets that are also in there. And we have to access those pretty heavily, like tall building. Yeah. But people are less documented for cases.
I know it would take some pulling up of some pews in the courtroom, but what if a person would square off the...from the clerk's vaults? You know, when you walk into the courtroom, there's that wall, there's the clerk's vault, and then the judges would...could a person square that off and make it written there?
Were the entrance to the courtroom is from their office?
I don't know.
You could make almost a hall entrance and have the files along the wall and have a separate door then that...
It would just square it in.
I don't even think that would touch maybe the first row or anything.
There's basically a hallway now in there. Coming out of clerk's office into the courtroom.
Yeah, it's just a door you walk straight through to the courtroom.
So, it looks like there was a wall there.
Yeah, there was a wall there.
It's gone. But that's what they had.
According to blueprints, there's a wall there.
They had a hallway to walk out there.
So, that would be a possibility. You could put it pretty well anywhere in there. But according to this, there wasn't.
Yeah. And you know, they need the actual depth of the cabinet space to walk, you know, the rest of the hallway.
That would be more convenient.
Or is that the little cutoff that's there now in the clerk's office? Like... We have to go up there, but they have storage there. I think this is their existing room now.
Okay.
Because it's kind of weird shaped around the vault. I'm not sure your vault is that big, is it?
Our vault is pretty big because we have walls of...a whole wall of old symbols that are kept in there.
When you walk out the door into the courtroom, isn't it just the door?
It's right there, yeah.
Yeah. So, this was there, and it's not there now.
Okay.
Because mine's all in this area. Then we could go and try to create...
Because my whole storage is this whole...this whole wall here is my storage. So, I don't know if would that fit into that area?
Barely.
And this is...this is a three, three-wide. It's all one. It looks like it was built in there, so I don't know. It would have to be taken apart.
I think it was actually over there, and they moved it and added a third room.
Okay.
It was two.
Okay. And it must be able to add on.
This would have to be brought over. That would give, you know, if you come down here, down here, across there.
It doesn't seem like there's that much walk space between...would the pews be there?
I think their pews are longer there. We'd probably have to do something with the pews.
And if we are discussing courtroom security, I guess we had...I was looking through one of the old...they did a risk assessment back in, it looks like 2006. And one of the suggestions they had made was a bulletproof judge's bench for the judge to take cover under should anything happen. If we were to have to redo the setup of the courtroom because we were removing benches, anyways, that might be if we had to move the judge's bench for any reason. That would maybe be something I would recommend looking into because that was on that risk assessment. It's just one of the things that had popped out to me.
If you...if we go upstairs and look, this wall here is two-by-fours on the backside with...and they just put paneling up. So, you have to be careful when you put boxes on.
It's in here.
So, it could be moved.
That's the jury box where they sit.
It's not actually...
Oh, okay. Yeah. So, then, yeah, so here's the witness stand. And the judge's bench is here.
And there's an entryway here and an entryway here. So, there is a door already here.
For the...for the storage room?
Yes, it's just that the pews are kind of in the way.
The way that room...the way that wall is, you can put doors anywhere you want. It's just the false wall.
The only thing is, is Jennifer's voice carries, so whatever would happen, we'd need to have insulation.
Well, you can solve a lot of that problem with insulation. I mean, there's ways you...you have sets, you do different things in a wall to sound for insulation.
I mean, we can go up and look if...to go look and look at each of the offices.
Do you have anything else today?
I don't have anything else to do. We can go look outside, too, if we want to, to kind of get a bigger picture of what all the areas are. We just...I don't know what everybody wants to do, but it just seems like maybe if we work together...
We need to go up and look at this situation over.
I think probably you'd look back at the building, but people need to look at that building and see if it's going to be suitable for some A pews.
I really think the last time, when I was up in the storage area, I think it's just like my house and everybody else's house. It's more an organizational problem than the stuff. I think it can be organized a lot differently.
Well, we attempted. We attempted many years ago with some cabinets, but I'm not sure that anybody uses those cabinets anymore because there's so much stuff because nobody will perch. So...
Out of curiosity, is the extension office...are you feeling that you have to have two separate, divided areas? Or is there any possibility that you all share, not a particular space that you're in now, just one space? It was kind of brought to our attention, there might be some concern that you might need some privacy issues. If your office was to move for whatever reason, that you want to be separate from one another, or at least your office?
There are definitely times with my director role, with the five counties, that I do need a door to shut and have...
and have to address.
Okay.
Uh, those privacy sort of issues.
This is a space, I was going to say this earlier, uh, I don't know, so the bus, if, you're going to need a space for the bus? Person, right?
Potentially.
I mean, this may be.
Potentially, yeah.
I'm just saying this could be a, I mean, I know you can't be in here on Mondays with commission meetings and kind of fluctuate around meetings, but we would be willing, this is a space we could also clean out. This could be a workable space for someone who's not here.
Every day?
Every day, but we could also, would be willing to work with.
I'm asking that because the, actually the building outside, if it's 24 by 20, the dimensions I'm getting from your two offices combined, well, not yours, but the two offices for Extension combined, is only 24 by 26. So you're losing six feet one way or the other. But if we were to do anything out there at all, if you, you know, if you potentially were the ones to move in there, you could probably partition an office within there as well. I don't, are there interior walls in there? That was the health department?
Yeah.
Better than everything.
Actually, and you're not losing that because your one office, well, there's a protrusion out into the hallway, but really your one office doesn't come all the way out to the outside wall. So really square footage wise, I bet you it's the same.
Okay, well.
We got adjourned, didn't view.
Yeah, we all adjourned, we wanted some space.
So I'm gonna, I'm just gonna recess you to all three of you meet together.
She said to recess so that we can reconvene to adjourn the meeting since we're all going upstairs.
Okay.
Just do like a recess for...